Hello, I'm going to open the hearing now. Let the record show that the time is 10:06 and the public hearing is now officially open. Note that we will be recording this hearing. Oh, excuse me. Note that we will be recording this hearing. Also, we will be sharing a screen in Spanish and Portuguese and the email address for submission of comments. This hearing is for the renewal of the New Jersey Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, Discharge to Surface Water Combined Sewer Overflow Permits for the Passaic Valley Sewage Commission, or PVSC, the City of Bayonne, the Borough of East Newark, the Town of Harrison, Jersey City Municipal Utilities Authority, the Town of Carney, the City of Newark, the North Bergen Municipal Utilities Authority, and the City of Patterson. We often use the acronym NIGPTES in referring to the New Jersey Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Program. My name is Joe Manick, and I am the hearing officer, and I am section chief in the Bureau of Surface Water and Pre-treatment Permitting within the Division of Water Quality at the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, otherwise referred to as the Department or NJDEP. Dwayne Koweski is a supervisor in the Bureau of Surface Water and Pre-treatment Permitting and will be providing an overview of the permits when I'm done. Also here today are many NJDEP personnel, including Susan Rosenwinkel, Director of the Division of Water Quality, Brett Callanan, Chief of the Bureau of Surface Water and Pre-treatment Permitting, and others who are part of the CSO program or part of other NJDEP programs. I will now be providing some general information about the public hearing process, which will take just a few minutes. As established in the NIGPTES regulations of the New Jersey Administrative Code at NJAC 7:14A, Subchapter 15, this is a non-adversarial public hearing, which means that the NJDEP is here to listen and to take testimony as part of our regulatory process. The purpose of this hearing is to provide the interested public, including affected communities, with an opportunity to be heard on these draft proposed permits. The NJDEP will be accepting verbal and written statements today. Please note that verbal and written statements have equal weight. So if someone is not comfortable speaking and has a written statement prepared, they can submit it electronically where it will receive equal weight with the verbal testimony. The email address for written comments is presented on screen as dwq_bswp@dep nj.gov. We will now add that address to the chat. The purpose of this hearing is to receive your comments and concerns. The NJDEP will respond to all significant and relevant comments, both verbal and written, in a response to comments document, which will be issued as part of the final NIGPTES permit decisions. The permatees and each person who has submitted comments will receive an electronic copy of the final decision document, provided you give us your email address. We will also provide a copy to anyone else who requests it, whether or not you submitted comments. Please be sure to leave your email address in the chat or send it to dwq_bswp@dep nj.gov if you want to receive a copy. Please note that the public comment period will end at 11:59 p.m. on May 14, 2025. If you would like to provide additional verbal comments, excuse me, if you would like to provide verbal comments today, please put your name, organization, and email address in the chat, and I will call your name when it is your turn. When I call you, please clearly state and spell your first and last name for the record. We will have a court reporter assigned to transcribe the recorded testimony. If speakers are speaking on behalf of a particular organization, we ask that you identify that organization. We want to hear from everybody, and we want to give everybody here the opportunity to speak. In view of time limitations, I'm asking each speaker to limit their testimony to five minutes. Individual speakers may only testify once until we hear from every person who is here and wishes to give testimony. If time permits and there is an opportunity at the end of the hearing and a person wants to testify for a second time, we will do our best to accommodate you. We are asking that all speakers and members of the audience respect the right of each person to be heard and refrain from any behavior that could interfere with the presentation of testimony. This hearing will end at the close of testimony or 12 noon, whichever occurs first. Dwayne?
Hello, my name is Dwayne Koweski, and I'm a supervisor in the Bureau of Surface Water and Pre-treatment Permitting. I'd like to give you some background on the subject of today's hearing, the renewal of the NIGPTES Surface Water and Combined Sewer Overflow Permits for the Passaic Valley Sewage Commission, or PVSC, and eight CSO municipalities, namely: the City of Bayonne, the Borough of East Newark, the Town of Harrison, Jersey City Municipal Utilities Authority, the Town of Carney, the City of Newark, North Bergen Municipal Utilities Authority, and the City of Patterson. These permits were issued draft on March 10, 2025. All permits are posted on NJDEP's Division of Water Quality CSO website. Combined Sewer Overflows, CSOs, are discharges from combined sewer systems, or CSSs. CSSs are sewers that were designed many decades ago to collect rainwater and snowmelt runoff, domestic sewage, and industrial wastewater in the same pipe. CSSs are no longer permitted in New Jersey for new communities, but many older cities in the state continue to operate existing CSSs. PVSC and the eight CSO communities mentioned earlier own portions of the hydrologically connected combined sewer system which flows to the PVSC. These permit renewals serve to assess compliance with the federal CSO control policy and New Jersey state regulations. PVSC provides wastewater treatment and transportation services for wastewater collected in an approximately 150 square mile service area, which serves about 1.5 million people in 48 municipalities within Bergen, Hudson, Essex, Passaic, and Union Counties. The wastewater treatment plant owned and operated by PVSC is designed to treat an annual average of 330 million gallons per day and discharge into the upper New York Harbor and upper New York, upper Newark Bay. In addition, PVSC owns, operates, and maintains parts of the system that conveys wastewater to the treatment plant. During periods of wet weather, the plant is protected from ex-venti flows, untreated sewage, and stormwater by discharging through the combined sewer overflow outfalls. Of the 48 municipalities served by PVSC, eight have CSSs which are hydrologically connected to PVSC. Five of the eight CSO communities, including the Borough of East Newark, the Town of Harrison, the Town of Carney, the City of Newark, and the City of Patterson, convey wastewater to PVSC through the main interceptor. While three of the eight, including the City of Bayonne, Jersey City Municipal Utilities Authority, the North Bergen Municipal Utilities Authority, pump directly to PVSC through the Hudson County Forest Line. Separate NIGPTES permits are being issued to PVSC in the eight municipalities. The CSO long-term control plan, as submitted cooperatively by PVSC in the eight municipalities, includes projects and timelines that will reduce discharges from CSO outfalls in these municipalities based upon the presumption approach consistent with the federal CSO control policy and New Jersey state regulations. As stated in the draft permits and in accordance with NJAC 7:14A, 15.10 and 15.14, the comment period will end on May 14, 2025 at 11:59 p.m.
All right, thank you. We are now ready to begin receiving testimony. If anyone would like to testify, please put your name and contact information in the chat. Okay, the first person I see is Andrea Jovis Sapal. If you'd like to begin testimony, go right ahead.
Hi, thank you. Do I start to spell my name? A-N-D-R-E-A, space, J-O-V-I-E, space, S-A-P-A-L. Thank you to New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Andrea Jovis Sapal. I'm a Jersey City resident and the program manager for Sewer Free Streets and Rivers, which is a coalition of community and statewide advocacy organizations based in and working with combined sewer system communities to spread awareness and information on the combined sewer overflow issue. While CSO infrastructure is being built and fixed over the next 10, 20, 40 years, New Jerseyans and overburdened communities struggle with the impacts of flooding in their homes and streets due to climate change and heavy rainfalls. Even minor rainstorms can result in CSOs into local waterways and sewer backups into basements and streets. Communities are frustrated by the increased flooding and disruption to their daily lives. We are concerned with the timeline for these permits. 2064 is too long away for my fellow community members in Jersey City and those within the other seven PVSC/CSO municipalities who have to deal with the constant worry and anxiety, wondering if the next time it rains, their basement will be flooded. Sewer Free urges permatee holders to leverage all available funding to shorten the timeline and ensure equity and affordability. We strongly encourage the permatee holder to find more creative ways to finance the much-needed solutions that can then accelerate the timeline. An example of an innovative funding mechanism that could be considered is a century bond to fund the CSO improvements over a longer period of time. The completion of green infrastructure projects being left to the end of the timeline is also a concern for Sewer Free partners. Green infrastructure can be a solid educational tool to increase public awareness of water quality and flooding issues. Moreover, with so many great infrastructure projects being implemented, there is an excellent opportunity to evaluate the installation of GI simultaneously, thereby achieving economies of scale. We strongly recommend the permatee holder to move the completion of GI projects earlier in the timeline to increase engagement and maximize community benefits. Sewer Free Streets and Rivers will share more details in written comments. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this critical issue. We look forward to continuing to work with you to ensure that the CSO long-term control plans are compliant and equitable for all CSO communities. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, Nicole Miller.
Hello. Do I need this? No. Hello, everyone, thank you. My name is Nicole Miller, and my first name is Marie, M-A-R-I-E. Nicole, N-I-C-O-L-E, M-I-L-L-E-R, Miller. I live in Newark, New Jersey. Thank you all for convening this hearing. And I know several of us are happy to be at this moment, to be here right now. And I want to commend all of you at the DEP for the work that you've done to bring us here to this point. I know it could not have been easy. And express thanks for the responsiveness that you've had to several comments that we've issued over the past couple of years to other permits, to other draft permits and finalized permits, and the reflection is seen here clearly in this PVSC permit, and we thank you for that. We do, I'm representing Newark Dig, doing Infrastructure Green, which is a coalition based here in Newark that is focused on stormwater management. And like Andrea mentioned, we do have issues with the extended timeline across the entire system, and we are hopeful that the DEP will work with the permatees to ensure that the timeline is as muted as possible. And to that end, that you are working to have some financial, some funding guidelines, guidance, I'm sorry, issued to the communities to help them with the sourcing of funds and to find some innovative solutions and encourage, incentivize them is within the bounds of the permit, as much as possible, to be innovative with the opportunities, including looking for partnerships. I know PVSC has representation on right now, and that is an opportunity, and we'd be happy to work with the department and the municipalities to sort of coordinate and find opportunities for that. Additionally, the going still on the opportunities of funding, we're having issues in the funding right now. There's an assumption that the permatees are all working together, but it's been five years and the shared agreement has not been finalized yet. And so we would like to know what position NJDEP has to assist in making sure that the cost-sharing agreement is finalized and concluded. We initially were told it would be six months, but it's been several years since the permit was issued, and that has not been completed. Additionally, the climate change projections are still a bit of an issue. We will be issuing more detailed comments before the May 14 deadline, but I did want to raise the issue right now. And for that, I'll stop and just again say thank you for your efforts, and I look forward to working with you more on this in the future.
All right, thank you very much. I don't see any other names in the chat, so we will pause and hold until someone else posts their name. I'll give it a few minutes. It's 10:30 now. I don't see anyone else who has signed up for submitting comments, but I do want to give some people a little bit more time in case they're coming late. So let's put things on pause for a few more minutes, and I'll get back to you. All right, everyone, it's 10:35. We haven't had any comments for about 15 minutes, but I still want to err on the side of getting all the testimony possible. But if no one's going to comment, then I think what we'll do is we'll pause for another five minutes. I'll check back in at 10:40. And if no one has any new comments, we'll end the hearing at 10:40 then. Thank you. All right, it is 10:40, and I'd like to announce that we do have another virtual public hearing scheduled this evening from 6:00 PM until 8:00 PM, or the end of testimony, whichever occurs first. It's been about 20 minutes since anyone's logged on or provided testimony. So I'm going to close this public hearing at this time, and thank you for the commenters, and thank you for those who have attended. Have a good day.